I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone join me in a pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mrs. Dawson.
Your honor, your court.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Short.
Here.
Trustee Dyer.
Here.
Trustee Porter.
Here.
That's your first button?
Here.
It's different thing about it.
Here. Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. Everybody has a copy of our minutes of our previous board meeting. Would there be any additions or corrections to these minutes? And if not, could I have a motion to accept these minutes?
Assume.
Second. Motion by trustee Poyer. Seconded by trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Gary, thank you. At this time, before we go into our regular session, I would like to open the meeting up to anybody that would like to address the board. And if they do, would they state their name?
John Cannonan, 93 Church Street. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board. Based on the situation with that building at 93 Church Street. Is Mr. Webb here?
I am.
Oh, Mr. Webb. Thank you for your letter. Very cordial. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present my case and my situation to the board. Now, it's obviously, it's obvious that the building is an eyesore and perhaps, as you say, it's a safety hazard, I think. Now, first of all, do you know if any engineer has checked inside to see if it is a safety hazard, if it's in a position going to collapse at all?
We have not sent an engineer in that building. It is still your personal property.
Yes, okay, I understand that. I just, I just thought that somebody may have taken a look to assess the-
I have taken a look.
The potential danger there.
Yes, you have side walls collapsing.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask is, just as a possibility that if I can save it in some form, I would try to do that.
Okay.
Okay? However, since the situation last year of what happened to the building with the water, obviously, my livelihood has, which I addressed, I put in my letter, has been completely wiped out. There was a settlement reached. Unfortunately, that settlement only reflected a very small portion of what I, of my income, you know, per year that I was taking in from that property. But again, my, all my inventory was lost, all my equipment was lost, and honestly, the building itself is a total loss. It looks like a, I don't know if you've seen inside it. It looks, you know, like a missile went inside that thing. Now, I'm in, obviously, I'm in a position here where I have to do something to take care of that building, that hazard, because it's my property. Now, my position is that I'm in no financial position to do it. I've literally lost everything. I have nothing, no income coming in at this moment. So, it brings me to the, what can we do? What kind of solution or agreement can I put forward? And I was hoping that the board, your honor, the mayor, would consider either repossessing the property, so I was, I'm not obligated to take care of it in that form, because I'm in a position where I can't. Even if legal action was taken, I'm not sure what I could, what I could do. Or if the, if it would be considered that any back taxes on the property be taken off, allowing me, allowing that part to alleviate me of that part, and then I can search out an investor to rebuild on the property, either by knocking the structure down completely and rebuilding, or fixing the property itself once I get somebody in there to actually tell me, you know, what the condition of the building is, which I could tell you that I did have somebody have a look and they think it could be, maybe it would be saved. And that would be my, what I would want to do. But I can't attract an investor in the condition that it's in, you know, with any back taxes being owed, or being under an obligation to knock it down, because then I'm looking at negative numbers. There's nothing, I'm making nothing on it. In other words, it would, it would cost me, I think, about $25,000 to just have the building knocked down and carted away, and then that would leave that small parcel of land there, which is, I think, you know, I think it's about 1,500 square, square feet that I can build on. So, any consideration, I would be most grateful. I know a decision, you know, may not be made now, but if you can give me a few weeks, I can have a plan made up, and I can put that forward.
If I may, John, if you ask, you request a levy of the back taxes-
Right.
In one million, is that-
I believe it's about, I may be off slightly, but I think it's about $7,000.
$7,000 wouldn't reflect one year's worth of taxes.
No, it reflects the number of years that I haven't been able to, I mean, if the bill, if I was, we were, when this, unfortunately, when this incident took place, we were in the process of restructuring. We actually shut down for the winter. We were selling off inventory in the property, and then we were to restructure, and then April, which we were reopening. And of course, there's, these are back taxes that you're talking about, which, you know, we had every intention and obligation to take care of. And now that it's not a functional building, I mean, I can't, there's nothing, it's not generating anything for me.
Did you, did you say that you were selling off inventory? The place was closed at the time.
Right, we were trying to sell, we were selling off the inventory. We were building up a, trying to build up the cash, cash flow.
My concerns about the whole thing is, I know that there was a, and you talk about the incident. We're all aware of the incident. But I think, my whole concern about the whole issue is, if there was a number that was settled for, you must have had to agree to it.
Right.
Okay, my, my thing is, the number was settled as far as the liability and whatever. We carry no liability. It's all your liability.
Yes, can I, may, I'm sorry to interrupt you on this. I, I know there's no legal obligation here that the village has, because I did sign that settlement. The reason, I mean, that was between the April and, well, when the incident first took place, and then by the time the settlement came, I mean, that period of time, there was absolutely zero income coming in. Obviously, a third of that had to go to an attorney, the settlement, and then the amounts therein, you know, were basically, I had to live off of. I, I mean, the perfect, the perfect thing would be, get the settlement, get the building either back up, or, you know, something functioning, because it does me no good either, having this, being in this situation. I don't feel, I mean, I look at it now, and it's, you can imagine, there's a sadness. My, my business, my livelihood is gone, completely. But I know, I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I know that there's no obligation here whatsoever. That's why I'm here, just appealing to the board, and your honor, because I need, I'd like to get something going, a resolution. I'm not in a financial position to do it.
Well, I, you aren't the only one that wants to get something going, okay? We have had numerous complaints about the building.
I can imagine.
We have people that are worried about their children being outside and falling. So, we are really-
Yes.
That's why I think you got the letter, okay? And because of the concerns of our neighborhood, to think of it as, and I don't know what's been going on, but I'm sure that there's been ample time for yourself to get an engineer in there to see what's going on with it. I think that's what we need to do. So, I think bringing you back to light to the village here is what we wanted to do. I think we need to have a plan in place very shortly. You know, it's unfortunate. It's too bad we're losing a lot of our older buildings in our village.
I may be able to restore this one if, I mean, if that's-
But that, that again, is, I think is probably a wonderful idea, okay? But there's also a time factor in this wonderful idea. Because as it sits there, and it deteriorates, and I haven't seen anything that's even tried to do anything, to put anything back together. That's the concern of the board, and actually, the concern of the residents on that street.
Can you-
So, I'm looking at you saying, you come to me, or this board, and you're saying, yes, we need to do something. Yes, we do. I would like you to get whatever you need to do, with an engineer in seat, but this can't be another year going away. You know, am I speaking out of turn, anyone?
No.
I mean, you know-
No, and I-
You know, and I, and I mean, I, I want the board, if they have anything to say, and if I'm wrong, I think all of us here have gotten some kind of correspondence or had conversations with some of the people, or, you know, and I don't know what's going on with you.
I've got numbers.
It's immaterial. But I know that we need to do something with the situation that has developed on Church Street. And that's where I am, okay? All right, any?
I know I've got numerous complaints as well on what's going to happen there, especially Church Street. We've got a festival coming up here at the end of June. Lot of people right in that area, and it is a concern of ours.
I agree, okay.
Here representing taxpayers, using taxpayers' dollars for us to sit here and make a decision to spend more money on this property after we've already paid one claim on it, and you probably have business insurance or whatever, that claim was paid, and I would say that to come in front of the board and say you needed more time would tell me that there's something to me that I don't understand, especially if the taxes have gone on that long, you were in a process of closing down or restructuring. It's something, it seems like there's plenty of time going on.
No, I agree. There's, there is plenty of time, and maybe, and I'm like-
Well, the liability is the main thing.
Yeah, I agree with you. It's, there's definitely a liability there, and I was part of the community. I have the, I know the neighbors must be, you know, limited about it, because I certainly would be if that property was sitting next to me. I'm not looking for another year. If you could just allow me a couple of weeks to get a, a plan together as far as what I can do with the building, and then perhaps you can, you're saying the taxpayers' considerations here? It would allow me, that time, if I could put something there to reestablish the, a good, or decent tax base for the, for the village.
Getting a plan is one thing. I mean, this is my own opinion here, but getting a plan is one thing. This has been, what's the timeframe, a year?
Yeah, it's about, it's about a year. It's actually a year, this, what are we, March? Yeah, it's about a year.
So, in the, in any event of any reimbursements or financial burdens or whatever, getting a plan to come to the board and say, now I'd like to get a plan, you know, over the last year, I think there was ample time. I mean, maybe you're busy and you've got plenty of things. And that's none of our, my business or my concern. But how much time? I mean, shall we give you, say, we sit here and say, all right, geez, two weeks sounds good. This is, and we want you in the community. We want to thrive off, off community people here. But what happens in two weeks? Now you have a plan, so that means that will the next story be, geez, I've got this plan, but it's a five-year plan?
No, no.
But you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
Where this could lead to?
Right.
I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, and I don't want to, and I know-
Securing that building should be your first, most up priority, because it's your liability.
You're right. It is, but I need help doing it, because I'm, I'm fine, you're right. But I'm in, I'm not in any financial position. I mean, there was something in the letter that said legal action. I can't, even if there was legal action, I'm not in a position. I'm saying, two weeks, I can come up with a, a plan. And I'm not talking about a five-year plan. Two weeks, I can come up with a plan, something I could do with the property.
Whether restore or-
Restore or-
Demo.
Or demo, right. And once I do that, I think I can, I mean, we, hopefully by, I'm not going to say by June I can have the whole thing, you know, spanned and new, but at least something-
Well, I mean, just some, I think just some effort on your part would give this board a sign saying, geez, you know, he's put up a fence to keep children away in case of brick wall. We haven't seen any of this. And this is my concern for the taxpayers here at the village, that, geez, let's, let's get Mr. Kavanaugh on the right track. And we've sent letters, and we've been in contact, so you're aware of what's going on. It's not like you were out of the country and weren't abreast, because we've got returned letters. So, there's correspondence.
Right, and you got, you've all been more than- You've been more than patient, more than cordial with me.
Right. So, how much, I guess what I'm saying is, this meeting here tonight, you were aware of, and you had planned on. You're asking for two more weeks. You were aware of this meeting for a year now, or whatever. You could have gotten some engineering done, I'm sure.
Right.
You know, if that was your intention, is this only your intention because you're on the spot? Or is this your intention? You know, I just want an honest answer.
And the honest answer is both. I'm, I'm definitely on the spot, but, you know, I'm not a, I don't want to go, I don't want to be taken out in handcuffs either way if something, God forbid, happens.
We don't want to do that either.
Yeah.
That's why we've been this patient.
Maybe I would prefer that.
Well, you know, it's been, it's been this long.
What if we say you get a fence up immediately? Step one, that shows that you are willing to work with us.
A fence around the-
The dangers of danger.
Where everything's falling apart, the danger area.
Okay.
I mean, that doesn't have to be a major expense. We're not talking about a white picket fence, you know, something as a warning to keep them there.
A warning. Even if it's just a hurricane or a snow fence, you know, the orange percrete, just to show a barrier. But I'm sure your property won't, so either, we want that.
No, no, that's my, look-
Just immediate while you come up with this two-week plan, and then something that's going to be done with in the next couple of months.
Right, and I don't want to be disingenuous and say, you know, I have, or even be, well, and say, I have an absolute plan. I'm going to have this done by this time. I don't want to say that. I will, I'll get the fence up as, as you're requesting right away in two weeks, or, you know.
A fence around the entire property, not just the-
You want, okay, to, to what you just said, around the-
No, sir.
Where the hole is.
Around the entire property. The building is in a state of disrepair.
All right, you're saying-
We don't want somebody entering it, or-
Okay, but not on the, the side of-
Around the entire property.
Well, I'd like to see something there, just to signify, even that orange fence, even if you put it there, that, that's a barrier, you know.
So, it's a confined area.
It's not going to stop anything from falling-
Right.
But it should deter people from being close, okay? This is what we're looking at.
All right, I'm just, but, but George, I'm just talking about the castings. I mean, the right at the, I mean, I'm not-
I'm requesting with the board's approval that you put up a snow fence, warning fence, whatever it may be.
If you touch your building on Castine side, just roll, so it's an indication that it's ribboned off.
We don't want children entering the building or playing next to the collapsing side.
And I don't think we'll have, it's been this long. I don't think a, a two-week extension on, at least there's, I, I'm glad to see you here this evening. That means there are some concerns on your part, okay? I would have been displeased if I wouldn't have seen you here this evening. I don't think a two-week-
Now, will this two-week plan put you in a better financial position? Like you said, the last year, financially, I haven't been able to-
Right, and no, and I'm not saying that in two weeks I'm going to be in any, personally, I'm not going to be in any better financial position. But what it does, it allows me to come up with a, a plan that I can show to either an investor, or some kind of partner, or something where it becomes attractive enough where I can attract somebody to fix the property. I think that there, I mean, you know, I know, you know, people that may, that may be, that may be interested, you know, but, I mean, that's the, that's the idea. I know something has to be done, I'm not going to drag my feet on the, on it. I understand it, I understand, like I put in my letter, I understand the village's concerns. I share them.
Are we in any kind of position to defer taxes or set up a payment plan for the back taxes?
Nope. Not that I know of.
Legal here, no.
Those that go into the county, if you don't collect them after they're not collected by the- that would be a issue.
That would go, yeah, that would go to the county. Again, my concern with that is, when I look at $7,000 for the bills, you know, and the building, I said to myself, well, that's not just a one-year thing, okay? And I won't go any further than that. Like I said, I'd be willing to go to two weeks, but I'd like to have something in this office stating what you're going to be doing. And again, it's, it's a time issue now.
Can you tell us how long, when you have that fence around it, to secure it?
Well, I'm here now, so I would say I can probably, within this, within this week, I'll do it, okay?
That satisfy the board?
And like, like you said, I, I know the property line's limited. On Castine side, I don't think it's as bad as the other side. As long as the fence is just touching the building, it continues around it. It just, it looks like a secured area, even though anybody could walk through it, obviously.
Right, I understand.
It'll protect you, as well as any citizen, from getting hurt. There's no liability on our part. I just don't want to see somebody getting hurt.
I agree.
The building downtown, they have that orange stuff all around it. Do you, does anyone know what they did with it?
It's very inexpensive. I think I've seen that.
You know, I mean, you might find someone who just had a building torn down that has it sitting around, you might be able to get reasonably. We have enough buildings go down this year.
I think Lowe's has got it.
I think Lowe's has, it's inexpensive.
It's not expensive. And that would show the gesture on your part, okay? So, we all in agreement? The only thing of it is, I'd like to see something here, because if not, at April's board meeting, your name will be mentioned again.
At April's board meeting? Okay.
And that's April 12th.
April 12th, okay.
But I'm looking to see something with you in two weeks.
Yes.
Ada?
If I may ask, John, before you leave, we, we have a phone number for you.
Sure. That's my home number.
You're down in South Carolina?
No, no, it's the Lower Hudson Valley.
Oh.
54.
You still doing production in Mexico?
No, you know, you see, that was the whole thing. We shut, we did, we were doing production there. We shut that down, and then we were shifting everything back here, because we were eliminating some, you know, our, what do you call it? We had too many products that we were producing, so we were trying to streamline it. So, we shut it down. What, what happened is, we, believe, you know, I know this is the big issue now in the country with the outsourcing, but what that was, enabled us to do was to drive our costs down, believe it or not, and get the company here profitable, which is, it succeeded in doing it. And then we shut that one down, and then we were shifting a more streamlined product line here as we were restructuring, but, you know. How is that?
Well, thank you for-
Well, thank you very much for coming this evening.
No, thank you for the invitation again, I think. I appreciate everybody's being so cordial and, and patient with me on this issue.
Thank you now. You have a nice evening, and be safe in your trip.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
At this time, I'd like to mention that we are going to be having a public hearing at 7 o'clock this evening on local wall number two of 2004 of senior citizens' tax exemption. I want the mayor to be, reported a mayor, it's going to be short. I'd just like to say a word to the, to the citizens of our small village. As you know, this past weekend, we've had a flooding issue down on Main Street and Main Lane. The threat of existing flooding is still there. I just want everybody in the area of this flood plain to be observant, cautious and careful. And if you see anything or hear anything, try and get hold of somebody on, on the village, because you can be our eyes and our ears, because we aren't there. I just want to intere, again, everybody be safe. Don't be by the river, stay away from the ice. Mother Nature is doing her thing again this spring. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to, to have a motion made to have a public hearing on April 12th at 7:00 PM for our 2004, 2005 budget. Could I get a motion to that? Motion by trustee Connor, seconded by trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I would, we will be having another budget hearing workshop March 15th at 6:00 PM at the village office. And I believe that will be advertised, Mrs. Dawson. On April 5th, we're going to have our annual organizational meeting and another budget workshop, and that will be at 6:30 PM.
May I ask what annual organization is?
Okay, an annual organizational meeting is what we go through each year, like you were put on committees when you come on. That's our annual organizational meeting we go through, and we, we name our banks, we name our, our newspapers, our press, our historians. Whatever organizes the village, that's where the appointment is made for the superintendent. Yourself will get a committee to be on, as well as all of the trustees. That initially is our restructuring, our reorganizing meeting, okay?
Got it. Thank you.
Just a fun time. Oh, and at this time, my report is filled up. I would like to call for an executive session to go into a personnel issue. Need motion? We're going to need it at the, at the time I go in, not now. At the time I go in. Okay. Report of trustee Connor?
I don't have much at the moment. I just want to thank all our Department of Public Works employees, the town employees, and Clinton County disaster preparedness, anybody and everybody, the fire department especially, for assisting us yesterday, today, and in the near future, because I'm sure that the other incidents related to the, the ice jams and flooding. I know it's a lot of time invested by, by all these people, and they've served us well, and I'm sure they continue to do so. So, I just want to, from the board, thank everybody that's been involved.
Thank you very much, trustee Connor. Trustee Short?
Last one.
My report is going to be really short tonight. It's my last report. And I just want to thank everybody, you know, that's on this board. What I want to say is, the guys are doing a great job out in the village. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, trustee Short.
And thank you for all that you've given us in the village, board.
Five.
Thank you.
Hi, Bebo, enjoy your chunk?
That's right.
Trustee Gary?
Okay, I'm real quick, sort of. Okay, I have the review form, and don't be frightened by the length, because it is able to be edited, okay?
I'm not frightened by it, because I get these in myself.
Um, I kind of covered every base. The first page just gives you the choices of ratings for you to give the employees, Joe. And basically, we're going to have to get together and, you know, get your input on it, okay? As you see, I'm not really writing on a computer, so some have lines, some don't have lines, and I couldn't figure out how to get all the lines in, so that's, you know, will come later. But these are the categories I felt were important. And again, obviously, Joe, I need your input of areas that you feel be covered. It, it gives you the, the main objective, basically, as you see on the first one, job knowledge, and then what we expect them to be able to accomplish under that job knowledge, and you rate them in each one of those categories. Then at the end, which is really important, I found important with my staff, is to really reiterate, first of all, what their strengths were that they have given throughout the year, where do you find them excelling? Sometimes you really have to dig deep for that, but find something positive to pull out for an employee. And then where you want to see improvement from the employee, because, you know, every employee wants to improve and change, and you put that down, and what kind of plan to get to that improvement level, all right? And then, as we get doing this on a regular basis, the objective is giving a review of how they progressed from their last review. Obviously, we don't want employees being stagnant. We want to see them continually improve. Obviously, we don't want employees being stagnant. We want to see them continually improving and progressing. And just future objectives, what you want them to work for. You may have a project, Joe, that you want one particular employee to improve in an area. That's where you're going to give them for that. And then the final page is just your overall rating. Um, it's always critical to have a section for the employees to put their comments. And in doing the review process, it's really important to get the feedback from the employee and have them, uh, give their overall rating. It makes it much easier. I usually start off my reviews with, well, how do you think you rated in this category, before I even gave my answer. And you'll find that it's much easier to do the review that way. Um, and then just a place for the employee to sign, yourself to sign, and the mayor, he is to be part of the process, just to make sure that you're following it.
You know, just to reiterate it on something you said, I would take, hand this to them first. Let them fill it out, and then give it back to Joe and...
That's an excellent idea.
You know?
Yep.
That way, they can go over their own processes themselves.
Yeah.
And...
I did the same thing. It's a wonderful way to do it.
Then he can critique their work.
Yep.
The ratings won't change, is that true?
Uh, no, these are your ratings. Outstanding, good, satisfactory, below average, or unsatisfactory. And you give the little blurb criteria of what they're supposed to be doing in that area, you know, so, you know, communication. Do they use their verbal and written skills? Do they share information? Do they listen to direction? You know, that's always a hard piece for some employees, listening to direction. So you take all those components and rate them overall. So if listening to direction is their weakness in there, first of all, you explain their positives and then say, let's work on following direction the first time, you know, type deal. So I think I covered all the bases, but, you know, there could be other areas here in the village that you would look at more closely. So I'd like you to really take a look at that and feedback, and we can adjust and...
Sure, there are some specifics you wanna add, or I may add.
Yep.
I'll review them with you.
And then I can get the lines nice and pretty and perfect with someone else's help.
Okay, then, thank you very much.
And then one other thing, the, um, ambulance now being on call. I have to tell you, my son had a seizure Thursday at school, and the response time was under five minutes. And it's really wonderful having them right there. Um, so, uh, this level, no, it's, it's a great thing. And they are there during the day, so it's, it's quick and it's wonderful. Is that it?
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion, uh, to go into public hearing? Motion by trustee Porter, seconded by trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Miss Madoff again. Since there's no one here to, uh, address the board on this public hearing, it's, uh, amending section one zero five dash two article, two entitled Senior Citizens Tax Exemption of the Villas of Champlain Municipal Code. If the income of the owner or combined income of the owners of property exceed the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars for income tax here, immediately preceding the date of making the application for exemption. In other words, what it has, uh, this, we have raised it from twenty... Twenty thousand five hundred to twenty-four thousand. Could I have a motion to go back into? Yes. I think we gotta go back into regular session for this. Can I get a motion to go back into regular session? Uh, trustee, uh, motion trustee Connor, second trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, since, uh, we have had no pros or cons to our local law, could I get a motion to have our local law number two of two thousand and four, uh, passed? Motion trustee Short?
Second.
Second trustee Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion Gary. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dawson.
Keeps us straight.
No, she needs, she's working hard, I'll tell you that.
Earns her keep.
Yes, she earns her keep. Okay, uh, report of trustee Porter.
I don't have that much either this, uh, this evening. Um, last meeting, I, I said I would check into the cover on the digester. Now, Voice Water Planet, I have. The scope of the project looks like it's, it's beyond something we can do within all our means. Not say we couldn't do something, but I think it would be a long-term, proper way of doing it. I know we have probably several months now before it becomes a problem again, but, um, maybe it'd be best for Joe to handle this, since his slow time's coming up. And maybe, uh, research some of these, these coverings, maybe same company he did the, uh, the clarifier, to see what's available or what can be done with it. And I'm more than happy to assist you in that and whatever research I can do, but, the other thing is, uh, I spoke, uh, actually Donna was nice enough to make me a chart. What I'd like to do is institute a diesel fuel report and a gasoline report so we could better monitor our gasoline and diesel fuel and to the date, the vehicle, the mileage, the gallons, and the totalizer on the pump. And then who filled it, who filled the vehicle. Obviously, we have other people filling, but off different keys, so just narrowing down, if we do have a fuel leak in a vehicle, one guy doesn't know, one guy fills today, the next, same thing with the oil. You know, if somebody's using oil, better monitor it. So I'm gonna be instituting that, maybe just on a clipboard, it's, uh, you heat fuel, you just fill it out. The other thing was, um, we spoke about, um, property lines and access and stuff, and then maybe in the near future, we can come up with a plan on how to address that. That's all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you very much.
Pretty good, huh?
Pretty good.
He deserves a clap.
Donna's wrist was getting sore, I could tell.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's, uh, thank you very much, trustee Porter. Okay, report of, uh, clerk treasurer.
Uh, the only thing I have this evening is I distributed my revenue and I've cited your report reports for February of two thousand and four on the value of balances to date. Uh, hopefully, we'll have a project of the age, you know...
Right. Three quarters of the year, that's at the end of February.
Right. So that's where we are, and I think we're, we're doing quite well with that so far.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Are you any questions for, uh, clerk treasurer? On to report of our superintendent.
Um, I believe you all have a copy of my report. If there are any special issues you'd like to go over, I'd be glad to address them. I can review one of my items if you like, but...
Number twelve. Has this been resolved?
Uh, no, Miss, uh, Miss Paquette will get back to me after she has one of her mechanics take a look at the A C units to let me know if there's any, uh, any claim to be issued.
No, we actually don't think snow's down that.
These A C units are located maybe seven feet below eyesight. If you were in the tractor, you couldn't see them.
Not knowing it was there.
Pushing snow back in the driveway between the historic building and the K C.
Why are we pushing snow back?
To open that parking lot up. 'Cause I think we take care of the sidewalk there, and that's why we're doing that.
That's my only concern.
We pushed snow there before as part of the storage area for snow to get it off the street because of that tri-corner there between Oak and Elm and Elm, Oak, Elm and the bridge.
We got plenty of space across the street and rural street that we need to get in there with a bucket and get snow on, we've done that.
Well, apparently, it's been done in the past, but that was before the A C units were located there.
Yeah, and I didn't realize that we, we pushed snow down that, maybe.
It's a previous habit that has been corrected after the fact.
Would you revitalize, revitalization of that building?
Got a question, Joe, on the telemetry. Um, I know you indicated, uh, earlier when we spoke that you have the, it's not a mag meter, but similar to it, is installed now?
It is installed. Uh, we've tapped the pipe and it's ready to be installed. We left the sensor out until we, uh, are ready to install it with the controls and electric hookup, which will occur March eleventh.
Okay, that was my, what I was getting to. That, that works in conjunction with the telemetry?
Yes, sir.
And he's on schedule for...
March eleventh is our start date.
This week?
This week.
Right, Thursday.
Thursday.
What timeframe are we able to start repairing some of the roads? I mean, when is that safe to start doing?
I don't know what kind of monies I have for road repairs right now. I couldn't even give you a timeframe of what I can expend on that.
You know, the end of Pine Street here is, really sinks horribly.
There are...
That'll come back up. You'll find in the spring, that'll come back up.
There are dozens of areas that need repair.
Oh, I know, there's plenty. That just is really severe. I mean, you have to crawl all down.
Every year that does that since, since they dug it up.
This seems worse than ever.
It was, it was pretty bad pretty sure.
Yeah.
And, and what I was explaining to you years ago is that when they replace the soils underneath there, it's replaced with different type of soil. So that's why you're getting the...
Anything I can do early with funds that are available, still in the budget, though.
I've had a lot of parents mention it to me.
Because what happens this time of the year now with the frost heaved and the frost moving out of the ground, it moves. What usually happens is after we know the frost is out of the ground, uh, usually in the past, we go around with cold packs and try and fill all the holes and, and get some of the things so that it's smoother to roll down. Initially, we'll probably be paving some streets or probably working on prospect this year, but that's usually what we do as a rule. Uh, every municipality does the same thing every year, okay?
Joe, I don't know if you noticed, but the Church Street extension or the, the loop off from Church Street, I'm trying to place the name of it.
Maiden Lane?
No.
The hand corner?
Going up the hill or down the hill, I don't know.
By the barber shop.
Broome Street, you got Broome Street?
Is that Water Street? I don't think it's marked that way, is it?
It's appropriate name.
No kidding?
Yeah.
And, and obviously, with the ice situation we have now, I don't assume that it's done, but there's a, um, trench that was hydro cleaned right out of there, probably a foot and a half, two foot thick, right on the edge of the road between the barber shop rental and the street. I don't know if you noticed that when you were out and about.
Actually, no, I didn't.
There's a crevice probably a foot and a half, maybe some spots two feet, where it's washed right out. That might be something to look at in the near future due to pedestrians and whatever.
My, I will evaluate the immediate needs.
Well, I, I think what we need to do, uh,
Keeping that time separate.
Any damage that was caused because of flooding, we have to document.
Aye.
And any time spent for anybody, you know, whether it's man hours, machine hours, and what have you, has to be documented because, you know, potentially, we can get some type of reimbursement for some of that stuff. And any kind of damage to the street, especially if I mean...
Well, that's, I just fair of you to, I, I thought you had seen it, but if you hadn't, I, I noticed it today. I took a tour around once, everything had kinda settled and, um, just to see if there's any major liabilities going on. And that's the only spot that I saw that could create a problem.
We should have a barrel that you place if it's that bad.
It's off the, it's just off the edge of the tarmac, but it, it's something that maybe tomorrow we can...
Source of barber shop on the right hill side.
That's correct.
Where, where the actual street is.
Going right to our lift station.
We may have some stone, some stone.
That's Maiden Lane.
Maiden Lane, okay.
Yes, that's Maiden Lane.
Okay, I didn't think it was like, would you say right here?
That street was washed out very badly.
Well, I think it's gonna be named, I think that street...
I've heard it called that.
Yeah.
Church goes right straight through the intersection, and it changes to the sign that was Maiden Lane. I think that's how.
And then, uh, I think...
I think once you get the ice off of that, that's the, you know...
You might have problems on the other side, no doubt.
You might have problems, yes, right.
No doubt. But if you could make a note to get maybe somebody there in the mornings, put a couple barrels or something, sure you could.
You're gonna find, you're probably gonna find a lot of issues
Yes.
once things settle down where you can actually start looking at things.
Have they cleared the bridge, Joe?
Yes.
It's all open now.
Has it turned thirty?
Okay, is that it for superintendent Webb?
Joe, uh, one, one more thing. Do you have a cell phone?
Uh, no, I, actually, I was just looking at the plans this last month. I just haven't committed one yet.
Do you normally keep a radio on you or just your pager?
Uh, my pager usually in the evenings and, uh, I bring a radio home, just keep it charged, but I don't turn it on because no need.
See the amount of stuff that's been happening lately, just a pretty easy way to get ahold of somebody quicker.
Pull horn out the window.
Oh, it's only with this, your charger, do you have your charger at home?
Yes.
Does it stay in charge? Do you put the whole unit right in?
Yes.
It'll charge while you have it on. That way, if anybody wanted to come on, probably for now, you need to leave it on at home. Need, need it low?
When I leave it on, it's scanning. It squawks all night, it's a...
It sure does. But I think all you gotta do is, uh...
Well, those are pagers, is it available, or your next to a phone, I guess, isn't anything? I didn't know we had a cell phone.
Well, I think if he, I think if he sets it right, I think he can put it to see it, it'll just stay unseen and be on department.
But the departments would only be out if there's an emergency dispatch by him or one of us, so...
What I think of it is, you can come up here, I see it's on one A and N. Anyways, I think if, if you want to do that, we can probably work on a plan where, you know, if anybody wanted to come in, they can talk to him on the radio as well, too. But, uh...
Pagers will enable.
Pagers fine. Pagers will work.
Yeah.
So is that it now? Onto correspondence, uh, Mrs. Dawson.
Item, excuse me, item one is correspondence from New York State D E C regarding the wasteland, what the district is doing. We have something to that right now.
Yes, that's done right now.
We had to make a play there because it had to be spelled by the point four or something.
Yeah, we reviewed it last week.
No, that will send out.
Word box from the Clinton County Health Department regarding the state water sample from the report.
And we're...
We're evaluating that to see what samples, do two-year, three-year samples that have to be done. We're trying to find the records of when those were done, if they've been done, and Larry and I are working that out.
No, there's no, it has to be done in two thousand and four.
Item four is correspondence, correspondence of William T Murray regarding the water control in the Indian River. Item four is a final source water assessment report from the Fulton County Health Department. And the state support underpass has been moved to a gathering. Item five is correspondence to the lack of more data regarding directions for insurance policy. Item six is quote from underwater solutions regarding maintenance of our water tank. Item seven is correspondence from the New York State Office of Technology regarding the statewide wireless network. Item eight is a quote for street striping from the Clinton County Highway Department.
I got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
From what I remember in your budget, you're looking, my impression, to do that ourselves as comparative.
Yes, they will provide striping for the highway, nine and nine.
Well, I mean, we, we've had them do Elm Street, I believe.
Well, the way I look at it...
Elm Church, I mean.
We've had them do. The way I look at it right now, to do a sideline, each side of the road and center lines, it's costing me five hundred bucks a mile. So...
Well, I'm asking, you, you're thinking of doing ourselves as comparative. That's all I just want.
No, I'm sorry, that's, that's why I requested a, uh, striping machine. Because if you do that, and residential, residential streets and anything else we can think of that we like, parking spaces.
The striping that you use for that, is that expensive?
The paint?
Yeah.
Not, well, it's a special weatherwear paint, but, uh, I don't have the pricing on it yet.
Okay.
The paint, yeah. I think the machine's just one of those skinny rollers, right?
Hand machine, yes.
Can we get a straight line, though?
Stop them on.
If they drive the truck correctly, it'll be a straight line.
So I'm to assume that is a requirement?
Oh, so you actually...
So I'm just assuming it's required to have these roads lined?
I don't think, I don't think there is any requirement of that.
No, but do you actually attach a toner trucks like this?
I would mount it on the back of a pickup with a sprayer to drive down the road. I could go ahead and put some indicator marks, just so they follow the lines. We could manually do that, but it's not a big issue. You're set widths for every road, so...
We spoke about a temporary way of doing it, probably more cost-effective, by using the back of the pickup with other type of equipment to eliminate the cost and then accommodate streets that we've never done before, just to enhance the view of it, you know, like butter up, or, you know?
It's okay, I'll pass.
No, but I mean...
Well, we'd dress up the streets, that's what we...
It would, yes. Is that good with roller?
I hate wasting money. Who cares, the street's got paint on the edges, you know, we live in the country.
Well, the device we were looking at would accommodate the roofs here in the back. Joe had mentioned earlier about the roof back there needing paint, and the same machine can do that, and then with a different tip, put a pattern. So it's just a matter of modifying it to keep it steady and do streets. I'm just saying we would have that option. Versatile.
We might have to buy some black paint to black out a couple mistakes here and there.
Asphalt black, correct?
Yes, sir.
Item nine is correspondence, a question there from New York State Urban and Civilian Forest Department.
No, is this something we're going to spell out, or?
I haven't addressed it yet, that, that's a tree program.
Yeah, but I think they also want to...
They went donations and, because their budget's being slashed and...
But I think there's certain specifications, like, you know, system elimination, previous language, limiting money to cities over 65,000, the population or over. I mean, that's not going to help us if it's for those type of communities, so...
Yeah.
So I think they're looking for help to, you know, make this for everybody, not just big cities.
Right.
So I guess that's, that's what the form is for, I believe.
Maybe the question just fill it out, and you may not have it, but it's worth it.
Item ten, notification, notification to a department, initiate modification of the speed of the state D E C. Item eleven is public water system emergencies and communications reminder from the Putnam County Health Department. Item twelve is correspondence dated February 19th, and 23rd, 2004, from Long Island. And a response dated February 27th, 2004, regarding his property location in the street Church Street. Item 15 is correspondence from Life Tech notifying us of a leading on March 4th, 3000 emergency curves in the city. Item 14, a guide from New York State D E C regarding restricted data of school street and systems in the New York State. Nobody wishes to look at that, we have that on time. Item 15, notification on mineral ground water associations, 35th annual meeting.
Didn't Robert just go to that?
Yeah, I know he did.
And there's a cash prize drawing for those who participated, so we should go.
No, it all takes off, but I'm just...
It says it right in here.
Yeah, I know.
Item nine, six is our election notice, and election 268, and 12 minutes, 39 seconds. Here's another document.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. All business. Where are we with our steam plant? Yep.
It's regarding...
Uh, payment or whatever?
No, I'm waiting for him to respond to me about the parts we sent back for repair.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And they still don't respond back?
They have not sent the parts back, and I asked Mr. John Ford, who I'm dealing with, who has not called me back. And I have to follow up with them, but I let it go.
We are still, we are still on receipt of their first bill in Congress.
Yes, we have not issued a check on that yet, as far as I know.
And have they billed us again?
No.
We have a check that was written, it just goes in the...
Hold it, right.
We have it sitting on the file.
But we haven't received another bill from them, right?
No.
No correspondence at all?
We had told them until we actually receive our parts that we sent to them, they're not going to send them a check.
We wanted our parts.
And my impression is that they haven't done that by this time, maybe they tossed them or something.
Have you, have you spoken with them at all, Joe?
Not, not in the last couple of weeks.
But you have spoken with them?
Yes, I think it was probably close to a month ago.
What was their, what was their response?
He was going to investigate with his service department.
So the ball's in their court?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Number two is our purchase policy. We'll probably do that after we get on our budget.
Number three, we can almost take off, yeah?
Right, number three can come off as far as...
Why don't we just settle with them, Joe, or?
I haven't received their updated corrections from my last letter.
So there was corrections he needed to make?
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't received it?
And so based on his last letter that you sent him of the corrections?
We haven't received it.
From my last letter, I have not received any.
Should we leave it on just as a reminder?
Well, because we're not complete yet.
But let's make sure we get the revisions.
Right.
This one's almost off the list, too.
Item number four, telemetry system.
Which starts Thursday.
Yeah, we've already spoke to superintendent on that. Do we have any new business to come before the board this evening? And if not, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make that motion.
Second. Motion trustee Short, second trustee Porter, all in favor?
Aye.
To all you watching out there, have a good month, we'll see you next month.